I would like to call this meeting to order, please. I just want to make an observation that this is quite a friendly group and we have to go around and say hello to just about everybody, so that's why it takes a little bit of time to get this meeting done on time. And Vicki, of course, is getting us all set up. Vicki of the new eyes. Thank you. First of all, we'll have reports to the board, SGA, Stefan.
So as you all know, the school year is wrapping up, and so is SGA. But last week, we held our elections for the new executive committee. And this is Jackson Kraft, the new president for next year.
Okay.
And I was also going to bring the new vice president and the new ex officio, but they both had prior commitments, so they were unable to come. But next year, Keenan Carroll will, he's the new ex officio member from SGA. And that's about it, other than that I'm looking forward to seeing you all at the graduation ceremony, so.
We will all be there. Thank you, and welcome, Jackson, and thank you, Stefan, for serving.
Thank you.
It's been a joy to get to know you.
It's been a good year, so.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Madam Chair, if I could have just a quick point of personal privilege. I've truly enjoyed working with Stefan this year. He has led well, he's been involved, continues to be an exemplary student for LCCC. I am looking anxiously forward to his remarks at commencement on Saturday that I know he's been practicing diligently for a while, but we sure appreciate your service and what you've done to lead the student body and the time that you've been here, and wish you the best of luck in the future. And Jackson, welcome aboard. I hope Stefan has been clear on all the work that you have to do now as you're in your new leadership position, but we certainly look forward to working with you as well, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot.
And if you need to go because you have to study for finals or something, feel free.
Yeah.
Thank you. Next, we have staff senate, Amy.
So as you all know, we had our employee banquet a couple days ago, and we had a really great turnout. We had 220 people actually attend, which was the maximum for the room in Little America, so kind of glad that we didn't have a whole lot extra than that, or else we wouldn't have a place to put them. But it's really great to see that many people come to the banquet and just show up and support all of our campus members. I hope that we get that many in the future, and we'll continue to push forward and have a good committee for that and make sure it's great every year. Next, we have coming up is the employee picnic. That's on June 6th. There will be an invitation sent out to campus this week. I want to get that flyer out before faculty leave, and then I'll also be sending out another flyer in a couple weeks to make sure that everyone can attend and they know the dates and the times and things like that. So that's another thing to look forward to. We also do have officer elections coming up at the next meeting. We'll have that probably in about two weeks or one and a half, so you'll see another couple of new faces, and this may be my last or second to last meeting as well. So I certainly want to thank all of the board members, and Dr. Schaefer, and everyone for supporting staff throughout this last year and through the short time that I've served as staff senate president.
Do we have any questions of Amy? Amy, thank you. You've been great. It's been a joy getting to know you as well, so maybe we'll see you again next year, or maybe not.
Certainly. Feel free to stop by the office.
Okay, and I know Kevin Kilty loves to flip hamburgers, so recruit him for your employee picnic.
Yes, yes. I certain, that would be a big help. Thank you.
Faculty senate, Rob Van Cleve, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our last faculty senate meeting is Friday. We will be electing new officers for the next year, so at the next board meeting, I hope to introduce you to the next faculty senate president. My term is up, and I'm going on to bigger and better, I hope.
And what is that?
Oh, I have accepted a position as department chair for the Computer Information Systems Department, so.
Congratulations.
That's going to fill my plate, and hopefully I can do a good job there. The issues that are still pending advising is a concern of faculty still, and Student Services, Judy Haye and Catherine Foell in particular, have been more than accommodating to listen to our concerns, and have actually formed an ad hoc committee consisting of three advising personnel and three faculty members to work out the details of how faculty will still stay involved with student advising. And we're very pleased and looking forward to working with them. Job descriptions, workload policies, et cetera, are preliminary discussions we've had, and we've had a preliminary draft from Dr. Fiero. We will probably continue to work on that a little bit over the summer, but hit it hard and come to some resolution hopefully in the fall on that. And beyond that, I really don't have much else. Any questions?
I think that's good enough. Thank you. You've done a great job. Thank you, Rob. We'll miss you. LCCC Education Association, Jeff?
I'm bringing help with me this time. So, serious help. I've got good news. We've got a new officer team coming in. I'm excited to announce that Megan Kelly will be the president of EA next year, and Maggie Swanger will be secretary, and Jim Strelman will be the treasurer. We still haven't filled the vice president position, and so hopefully Megan will, she'll keep you posted and bring a name forward in the future. So I just wanted to introduce them. I don't know if Megan has anything to say, but I'm excited. This is a great officer team, so.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, and we look forward to getting to know you, Megan.
Right, thanks.
That's the fun part of this job, is getting to know so many of you. So thank you very much. The president's report, Dr. Schaefer.
Madam Chair, members of the board, just a couple of quick items to share with you. Included in your board materials, you have a copy of a letter that we sent out to a large number of individuals, including many of you, to invite them to a series of information gathering sessions that we're having to sort of kickstart the planning process leading up to the performing and fine arts building project that we have in our Building Forward facilities plan right now. So first one will be tomorrow in the afternoon, and then the second one, I'm trying to remember, will be on the 29th. So we have one tomorrow from 3:00 to 5:00 here at the Training Center in Room 120, and then on May 29th, we'll have one from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. in Room 120 as well in the Training Center. The intent of these meetings is really to start a very broad conversation that includes both faculty and staff internal to the campus community, as well as members of the arts and the broader community of Cheyenne. And we'll be holding these sessions just as a way for us to start gathering the ideas, the concepts, the opportunities, the gaps, the needs that we see both within the current educational programming, but as well as the opportunities for bringing a even more robust arts environment to the community. And so I would encourage you, if you are able to attend, to come and join that conversation or to just be there to listen as well. But we really are looking forward to engaging the numerous individuals who have expressed interest in this project. From here, we'll do information gathering. From there, we'll move and actually create a steering committee for this project, and then have them help us walk into more of an in-depth study in the development of a prospectus that would, to trustee Erickson's comment earlier, really help refine conceptually what we would like to see in this building, what type of programming, what would the operations be. And that prospectus will help feed and lead us into the Level One planning process here. So just wanted you to be aware of those, and certainly I hope you can make it. I believe trustee DuBois is coming tomorrow, so look forward to seeing him there, and we'd love to see you all as part of that. The other thing I want to update you on is just to follow up to our conversation at your last meeting regarding some of the changes to the way capital construction and major maintenance projects for community colleges will be handled within the state. As you know, a couple of legislative sessions ago, there was some legislation that was passed that essentially transferred most of the construction management activities out of the Wyoming Community College Commission to the state's A&amp;I Construction Management Division. That is a new ground for that group. It's a new ground for community colleges, and as the rules, the handbooks, the guidelines, the procedures of how we would work together have been unfolding, as you heard at your last meeting, there were some concerns that we had, concerns about fiduciary oversight of funds leveraged by the community on behalf of the trustees to pay for buildings, the planning process, monitoring and managing the construction process. The community college presidents met with members of A&amp;I Construction Management in Casper last Friday. They were very gracious in taking time to come up and meet with us, and I think we had a real good conversation and really sort of worked on what we saw as the biggest sticking points, but also asked clarifying questions on both sides to get a better understanding of how we'll work together through this process, through these projects and through this process. And I felt personally very comforted by that meeting. I think it struck the right tenor, the right tone. We recognized where we still have work to do. They seemed very, very willing to work with us individually, as well as clarifying their own guidelines within their handbook to make sure that our concerns that we had expressed really were alleviated. And we saw the first positive movement in that direction on Monday when we met with a gentleman named Matthew Kivin, who will be managing many of the community college construction projects. He came out to campus. We talked through the selection and the contracting for an architect for the final design on the Student Services and University Center, sort of the process we would go. And every indication from that meeting is that it will be a collaborative process. And yes, we'll learn as we go, and we'll have to help refine the parameters at which we work under, but I was very, very pleased by the outcome of that conversation, and I think we'll be able to make this work in a way that we'll still be able to deliver building projects that we believe meet the intent of what we sold to the community and do those on budget and on time. And so the meeting was good, and I just wanted to make sure that you were all updated on that conversation and where we're moving from there. So with that, unless there's questions, Madam Chair, that is my report.
Questions? Okay. I have the next item, and that would be Dr. Schaefer's evaluation, the terms of the evaluation. And I know that I've spoken to each of you, and I hope that you agree that the list of respondents has diminished slightly, but I think there are about 41 people that will respond. And when we respond, we will respond as the board. The evaluation will come back as the board responses and then the other responses, so that the board will know who we are and who the rest of the college is, and then we can get a better idea of the evaluation, which is one of the requests from trustee. The timeline would be that if we approve both of these items this evening, we will send this to Marty Sizik tomorrow, all of this information, which I've already talked to her about. And the week of the 12th of May, we will receive our evaluations and our instructions on what we're supposed to do. We usually get about five days to fill out the evaluation. And then on the 4th of June, we will go into executive session at about 7:05. That's our regular meeting night. And we will take 30 to 45 minutes for this evaluation results, and then we'll go into a regular business meeting, or board meeting, I guess. So if there are any questions, I would take them now. Ed?
How much prior to June 4th is Marty planning to get us the results so we can review them prior to that?
That is a question that I did not ask her, but I would think that she could do that toward at least, I think we have about almost three weeks in there, so that's a good question, and I'll ask her that question.
It'd be nice if we could have them at least a week prior to.
Sure, that's a good idea. Okay, so if there are no other questions or comments, could I please have a motion that we go ahead with this?
So move.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That was unanimous, Vicki. Thank you very much. I just want you to know that there were a lot of questions, and some of those I had Marty talk to the individual, and some, we reconstructed some of the evaluation. I believe someone wanted Joe's goals put into the evaluation, so this evaluation is different than it was in the past, and I think that'll be a good thing. Marty was pretty impressed that we had taken it to this level, so she was happy. Okay, thank you. LCCC General Education Corps, and Terry, is that you?
Yeah, and Madam Chair, as the ladies make their way to the podium, and we all look at them and draw our attention to them and make them feel uncomfortable.
No.
I just thought I would just give a brief preface to what you're going to hear. Many of you recall at your retreat in Laramie in January where you saw the, sort of the first culmination of really some excellent but difficult work of the faculty on the General Education Committee and other groups on campus in helping reform and redesign the LCCC general education curriculum here. You also heard at that time, an update on the university's new university studies program or their general education program, and sort of how we were trying to align those two. Well, the work has continued, and you now tonight have Dr. Fiero, Dean Harper, and one of our excellent faculty, Tanya Griffiths, who have, Terry and Tanya chair the Academic Standards Committee, and they have really been helping shepherd us from curriculum concept towards implementation. And so you're going to hear tonight a little bit about the work that they've been doing and sort of the juncture that we're at now. This is coming to a decision point for you, and I just want to highlight a couple of things. You actually have a handful of things on your agenda tonight that we're not asking you to take action on. They're a first reading, if you will. We will be back with one aspect of this, the general education transfer block, and later on in your policies to be approved, the policy on general education. They're here tonight for you to look at, to understand, to ask questions. They'll be back, and we'll be asking for your approval on those at your next meeting. But what you're going to hear about tonight is the great work they've done on general education competencies, aligning those competencies to structured for courses and curriculum, the process in which they will actually approve courses, and what we'll do when students complete the general education curriculum here at the college. And so I'll take that as an opportunity to turn it over to Dr. Fiero, and just want to publicly commend the ladies and Jose for the work that they've been doing with all the other faculty and academic standards to get us to this point, so.
Thank you, Dr. Schaefer. Good evening, everyone. I guess I don't really have much to say after the introduction from Joe, because he took my notes. But what you're going to see this evening is just basically a culmination, or well, the culmination of the first part of about a year and a half to two of work that the faculty have done. They have done an excellent job putting this together. This is probably at least four years, five years worth of work that they have put together in about a year and a half, so we're very proud of what they have done. So basically, just to give you the background of what we are going to present to you this evening, is the general education corps and the possibility of the general education corps for transfer. So basically, it will be a package of courses that students will be able to take when they go to the University of Wyoming, so hopefully the university will be willing and able to waive the Gen Ed for our students, which will be of great benefit when they transfer to the university. So the background of this is funded out there, the LEAP initiative or the LEAP project, which is sponsored by the American Association of Colleges and Universities. And these standards actually have been adopted throughout the country. There are many states, they have basically implemented these, and they have data for a number of years. We are right now very close to this point, at least to implementation. And the project bases everything on their essential learning outcomes, which is basically how we build the Gen Ed competencies. And after that, you're going to see high-impact practices, which we are starting to implement as well. So examples of that is undergraduate research, first-year experience, which you will see included in this package, a common core for our students to share an academic experience together, capstone projects, which we had the opportunity to attend the capstone presentation for the Ag Department yesterday, and it was great, and authentic assessments, which again, some of our faculty are already starting to implement. So all these together, hopefully, is going to help our students to perform better, increase graduation and retention rates, and obviously better transfer to the university. To give you an example of what states have already implemented these, you have Tennessee, Indiana, Texas, Wisconsin, which already have a transfer corps in which community colleges take the transfer corps, as well as universities. The one that has the closest resemblance to what we have put together is the transfer corps on the Indianapolis Community, Indiana Community Colleges System, which is called the Ivy Tech System. And they have a very strong core. The only difference is that they have two options, one that is an STEM option and one that is a non-STEM option. Other than that, the transfer is very similar to ours, and it goes to all state universities in the state of Indianapolis. Very easy transfer, is recorded in the transcript for the student, and it also accomplishes the milestone for the student, which is trying to provide progression. Other than that, I will let Terry and Tanya tell you all about the Gen Ed and the Gen Ed Transfer Corps.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, trustees, and administrative staff. Thank you so much for allowing us to share with you a little bit of the development of the Gen Ed Corps and the transfer block. As educators, we felt that the policy, the transfer block information, the competency-based general education curriculum, as well as the checklist that you were provided with for this meeting were probably a bit overwhelming. And so we decided to put something together for you that would be a little more condensed and easier for you to understand this particular process. So Tanya and I will walk you through exactly what we've done in creating the general education corps, as well as the transfer block. If you follow with the handout that you have in front of you, you'll notice that the curriculum approval process has been highlighted, and you see it listed there as a process map. It begins with faculty working together to come up with the needs of the curriculum. And as you can see in the next area there, we have academic standards, which has subcommittees. The subcommittee that you see labeled SLA is the Student Learning Assessment Subcommittee, and that's a very important subcommittee because it actually is evaluating the criteria that we will use to measure student outcomes. So a very critical piece of the process, to the far right of that is APR. That is the Academic Program Review Process. And that particular subcommittee is going to become very active in fall of '14 as we redevelop that process of academic program review. And again, it's looking at all of the aspects of a program to make sure that that program is fulfilling the needs of the college, fulfilling the needs of the community, and meeting the standards that are required. In that middle section, you see something labeled Gen Ed. That was a subcommittee that was particularly formed to faculty to be able to start generating the ideas necessary to formulate the general education corps, the competencies that would frame that corps, and then start looking at the initiation of this transfer block. So I'm not going to take you down the rest of that process. I think it's pretty clear where that goes. I'm just going to highlight for you the necessity of general education, and this is built right into the policy. The Higher Learning Commission back in 2003 said, "General education corps is an essential element of every college student's experience." They need that depth and breadth of that education to be able to get out into the workforce and really provide the impact that we would like. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tanya, so you'll get a chance to hear a little bit more about this process.
I've been told I need to stay on task.
Who told you that?
There's a support for developing a general education transfer block based on national initiatives such as the liberal education and America's promise, learning outcomes, and similar regional models of transferable, common general education corps developed by the Western Interstate Commission for Higher Education. The transfer block provides value-added benefits because students are assured that they will have 27 to 28 credit hours completed at LCCC, and they will be accepted. The transfer block is the educational currency earned by students to be readily applied towards graduation or graduating from LCCC or partnering four-year universities. The general education corps incorporates high-impact practices from the completion agenda, such as we've incorporated within our 27, 28 hours, the Kohl's 1,000 College Success First Year Seminar. LCCC's general education transfer block of core requirements are aligned with our institutional competencies. These competencies are the overarching abilities that students develop throughout their educational experience and will be able to demonstrate as graduates. The LCCC competencies consist of the following framework: problem-solving, information literacy, quantitative reasoning, scientific reasoning, effective communication, both written and oral, collaboration, human culture, which includes cultural awareness and aesthetic analysis. Our general education transfer block is a completion milestone to be celebrated and recognized on students' transcripts. The transfer block is not a standalone program, but lays the foundation for students to complete an associate's or baccalaureate degree. The one thing that you do have in your, sorry, the one thing that you do have in your packet as a handout is the framework of our competency-based general education requirements for AA and AS degrees. And as you can see, on the right side, we have the institutional companies, the framework, which I did just outline. And on the left side, it talks about or speaks to the actual requirements or courses that will be looked at as they come through the approval process that we have set up this past year. And as you notice, the seminar, the first-year college experience is the first three hours on this particular outline, and then the rest of it is outlined what those 27 to 28 hours will be as our transfer block.
So in closing, what we want to emphasize is that the general education corps is going to be fulfilling the basics of what every student that goes through LCCC for that AA or AS degree would need. It also, the process that we have in place here is a measure of quality assurance that we are meeting those standards. And so we're very happy that we have put this in place. We've had plenty of support from administration, faculty, the deans, and we're open to any questions that you may have for us at this point.
Brenda?
Madam Chair, I have a favor. I have this, this, it's the three-column thing.
Sure.
You do, I'm not understanding very well. Would you just take me like through the first one and explain to me what you do this mean? Here's the core requirement is the semester intro to college, right? And then it...
Are you on, trustee Little, are you on the, yes, the transfer block form? Okay, that's great.
Am I, am I the wrong?
No, that's perfect. That's exactly what we're talking about. Thank you.
What is that middle, what, just take me through it, I'm sorry.
Okay. That first column is actually, oh, I'm so sorry. I, you know, like I'm in the classroom and I walk around, so. That first column actually outlines the... That first column actually outlines the requirements of the courses that we will be vetting through the process that are going to meet the competencies that we have set out. Okay? And as you can see, you're absolutely right that one of those, that courses that we have identified is going to be that College Success Seminar. Now, with the communication, we do have at least three credits from a course that is going to show our written communication competencies. And in the middle column, that gives you an idea of what type of course, once it goes through the criteria, it goes through the GenEd Committee, that's saying they have met the competencies, that they can show, the assignments that's going to tie to the course competencies, that are going to tie to the institutional competencies. And so, as you can see, English 10-10 would be a course that could come up through that process and be vetted as the written communication part of our requirement for GenEd. And the, the third column is the column that says, "These are what our institutional competencies are," or at least the abbreviated version of what our competencies are. And so, another example for verbal communication, the middle column says that once comm- Communication 10-10 goes through our approval process, it will be available to be part of our GenEd Core.
Madam Chair, can I-
Of course.
Can I keep going?
Yes.
So, what do you mean by, I must have missed something. What do you mean by going through our approval process?
Do you want to, or you want to? Okay.
Madam Chair, Trustee Little, the, the unusual part of this particular requirement list is that we develop the list based on outcomes, not on courses. So, right now, we don't have courses listed. We are asking faculty to show the GenEd Committee how their courses fit the competencies that we're trying to achieve. Traditionally, programs have been built on courses, and once you put the courses together, you sort of set what those courses mean. We're, we're building it backward. We said, "What is it that we want to achieve with this? Set some goals and competencies, outcomes that we want to achieve, and then we're going to start plugging in from the end back to the beginning." So, sort of reverse engineering the process. And what is, this is going to do, is going to make us think about how can we meet the needs of our students with what we do in the classroom, and then prove to each other that we actually doing this. And the way that we're going to do that at the end is with the program assessment. So, all these pieces that we have been presenting over the last several months actually tie together to one single big outcome. Is it enough?
That, that, now I get it.
Okay.
Michael, thank you.
Any other questions? I want to tell you that I'm really thrilled about this, because I know it's been a lot of hard work for not just the three of you, but for many, many others, and that this is the direction that I think the Board of Trustees wants to see this college taking. So, thank you very much.
Madam Chair, if, well, go ahead.
No, I just want to echo the same words. I want to say how appreciative I'm from the, for the faculty that have done this work. The staff that have supported this, Amy, have done a lot of work in the background with this as well. And I can't, I can't really put together how many hours they have put behind all these initiatives, so I just want to say thank you to everyone that put this together, and they were so close to, to get it done, so the student will benefit greatly.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Trustee Erickson.
Would it be appropriate to move item seven B, which is General Education Policy, right after this discussion? Since we're talking about the General Education Core and the Transfer Block and such. The next item that we need to address in the flow of the approval process is this board's approval of the policy. So, I'm requesting that we move that forward and deal with that now.
Actually, we certainly can do that, and we will not be voting on that this evening. This is a first reading.
I understand.
So, okay, that is fine with me, yes. And if you just want to-
Could you just-
Stay there. That'd be great.
Sure.
And then may I continue?
You may, please.
Now, if everyone would go to that particular policy, which is two pages, and the, the policy and purpose, paragraph one is pretty typical, two and three same, then the definitions. And where my question comes up is in the area of item five, which is proliferation of the curriculum. Jose, could you give us the rationale as to why that paragraph is included in the policy? And before, let, let me read it.
Sure, please.
Just to make sure that everyone-
Because not everyone in the room has it.
Right.
Good idea.
"The Board of Trustees supports a robust, rigorous, and diverse curriculum to ensure a broad education is available to LCCC students. This curriculum must be practical and relevant to the purpose of the degree and certificate programs offered by the college, and at all times should be designed and offered in a way that supports student completion and success. The college must resist the temptation to expand the curriculum beyond what is essential for completion of a program of study."
Well, traditionally, as academicians, we, we love to do a lot of things, and, and we love to teach a lot of courses, and we love to grow our programs. But we have a hard time dealing with realities that sometimes show that our programs need to be updated to meet the current needs of our students, or the current needs of the So, so because of that, we tend to, you know, stagnate on, on the updates that we need to make sure our programs receive. So, this 5.0 is intended to help us remember the, every program that we have needs to go through a review cycle, there needs to be updated to the latest standards and to the needs of the students and of the community. And the programs that are no longer relevant for the students or the community need to shift to become relevant again. So, this is, in essence, what we are trying to achieve with 5.0, making sure that we implement a constant review process, making sure that our programs are always up to date, making sure the, we don't expand the curriculum so much that we don't teach students what is needed for them to transition to the next step. We found that out as we were aligning a couple of our programs, and I saw a couple of you on that end smiling because you found this out. Every time you do curriculum alignment, you, you sometimes find out the, the courses that you're teaching that shouldn't be there, or material that you're teaching that you shouldn't be putting there. Not because it's not helpful for the student, but it, but it's no longer relevant for what you're trying to achieve. So, this is intended for us to continue that process as we move forward.
And Madam Chair, if I may, as part of the clarification, and, and I know Jose is answering that well, I was one of the driving forces that, that put that in there. It's really a reminder, in many ways, as Jose said, to the college, to ensure that when we add courses, especially courses that are intended to be focused on the general education of our students, that we add those thinking and really focusing on what are critical for students and needs and to develop here. If we add excessive numbers of electives or general education options that are offered too frequently, we start to fracture the student body to the point where we're not moving them through in a very succinct and efficient way, they don't see that clear pathway, and we end up with low-enrolled courses. And so, it's really a reminder us to talk about and think about the expanse of our curriculum. If you remember that editorial I shared with you from Byron McLennie last time, they've done some studies, and he referenced it in there, that when you look at what percent of courses your students actually enroll in, especially general education courses at the community colleges, and we haven't done this here, we will eventually, you find that 75% of your student enrollments are in a very, very small portion of classes. And so, that tells you that what students are actually enrolling in and actually striving for that meets the requirements of their degree programs are relatively focused. Yet, we, as, as, as Jose said, as academicians, like to expand and add other options and other courses, and we just have to be cognizant that sometimes expanding the curriculum and adding more options isn't necessarily the best thing for institutional solvency or student success. And that's, that statement is really a reminder of, of that.
Madam Chair.
Yes, please.
I, I think the rationale is well-described, and I understand that the, the flow of this decision-making and coming to the final decision as to what's going to be included and what's not going to be included was a real struggle. And it took, I don't know, even a vote, possibly, to get to what competencies and outcomes rather than courses. Okay? I have trouble with the last sentence. And I realize we're not approving this at this point, but that we're taking first reading. And last sentence, "The college must resist the temptation to expand the curriculum beyond what is essential for completion of a program." There's some subjectivity in here as to what is essential. It also gives the impression, the, the whole paragraph gives me the impression that we're kind of locked, kind of making a concrete statement that this is the way it's going to be, that it's going to be very difficult to be responsive to the growing needs of the community. So, I, I have a problem with that last sentence, and I guess specifically with the, the language of resist the temptation. This is our board policy, and I think that we need to feel comfortable with the phraseology of the paragraph. And I'm expressing my concern about that particular language, and I would hope that maybe, if I'm making any sense on this particular issue, that Dr. Joe, that you would revisit how that particular sentence is stated in a more positive way, rather than what appears to be kind of entrenched. It gives an impression of being entrenched to me.
Madam Chair, Trustee Erickson, I'm certainly open to, to recommendations with, with how to rephrase that. The, the intent for it's somewhat very direct, and almost direct directive, if you will, about resisting that temptation is, again, to remind us, it's not saying that we won't adapt, it's not saying that we won't create new programs, it's not saying that we won't update curriculum, it's not saying we won't be responsive. What it's saying is, is we need to look at and, and have the conscientious conversation of what would be nice, what we would like to teach versus what's critical for students to accomplish their educational goal. And, and it's there to remind us to say, as we look at new programs, new curriculum, is this in the best interest of students to help them be a successful completer from, from the institution? But, but if there's a way to temper that in a way, I'm certainly open to recommendations. It is your policy, and I would gladly tweak that or do what I can.
I have to say that I like it very much the way it is, so we'll discuss this and have an argument, okay?
Well, we'll have it made.
I think it reads well. I tell you what, it, when I was reading it, I was thinking, "The issues in the high school." Excuse me, Madam Chair, I did not ask for permission.
You have my permission.
The same problems were existed in the high school, because we were having more and more and more courses taught because different, different people wanted it. Prime example is one history teacher just loved teaching history of the American West, and spent too much time dealing with the West rather than the overall American curriculum. You know who it is.
Would that be myself? Terri Harper has something, if you don't mind, she would like to-
Sure. Trustee Erickson, I would like to just respond to your concerns about that last sentence. When I read that last sentence, I believe it aligns very well with the policy and procedure already passed by the board in relationship to degrees and certificates, because that particular policy puts strict limits on the number of credits. So, it really is in direct alignment with that particular policy, and maybe makes more sense when you think about it from that perspective.
What is the language of that particular sentence that you're talking about? Because I, I looked through the policies, and I wasn't able to find anything that had a similarity of this type of sentence.
Well, it, it's not a direct, it's not a verbatim, it's actually, what Terri is referring to, is a portion of the degrees and certificate that reads, "All our degrees should be between 60 to 64 credit hours." So, basically, limiting the credits on GenEd and focusing on what is required for completion will align with our requirement of degrees and certificates, especially degrees, associate degrees, that can no go beyond 64 hours, credit hours, with exception of some of the health care programs, the, because of their accreditation, specific accreditation requirements have a larger number of credits. But we can certainly phrase it a little different, I think, but-
Madam Chairs, I understand that this would be 27 to 28 credit hours.
That is correct.
And that leaves room for, what, three credit hours, two to three credit hours, so we have 15 per, what are we trying to achieve? 15 per semester, or for the year, 30, or less than 30?
Madam Chair, Trustee Erickson, and I'll answer quick, because I know Trustee Moser can probably provide good insight in this conversation, and I know he wants to. The intent from a policy perspective, both with the degrees and certificates policy that you approved, as well as this policy, is to give the institution guidance on how to create a responsive, robust, diverse curriculum that's relevant to the needs of our, our students, the needs of our community, and to do that, but to do it within such parameters that they are able for students to complete. General education is focused really on a year's worth of coursework, the 27 credits that should be the core to, to our, our transfer degrees and, and what we look at there. In fact, the general education actually addresses a portion of our applied degrees as well, but it's intended to give us some direction to say, "Look, however you design general education coursework to be included within degree and certificate programs, it needs to be of such size and such significance that it fills those liberal education requirements, but doesn't blow the program to the point that students can no longer complete it." The degrees and certificates policies does the same thing. It says, "As a two-year institution, for the most part, we have, we have associate degrees that are intended to be completed for a college-ready, full-time student within two years. To do that functionally, there are limits to the number of credits. We should expect students to have to enroll in and actually take over that duration." So, from a policy perspective, what your guidance is, both in this policy and the one that you pass in degrees and certificates, is to say, "Have focus with what you mean by your programs. Have focus with what you mean and you're trying to accomplish with your general education curriculum. Package it in a way that it is responsive, diverse, relevant, but also in a way that students can ultimately navigate it and complete it." And so, there are two components that together build up our academic programs, and we need to ensure that the institution, the faculty, the staff, that we all have the direction to ensure that we, we meet the, the necessities of the curriculum, but also the necessities of a student to be able to navigate the curriculum and actually complete their credential with us. And that's the overarching purpose of, of, of both of those policy statements and the way we've crafted the procedural elements underneath them.
I have something else, but if somebody else has-
Trustee Moser? You, would you like?
Follow.
Okay, go ahead.
I, I don't have any difficulty with everything that's been said, and even the, the proliferation of the curriculum, that in itself implies that it would be difficult to have any type of expansion unless it was indeed, quote-unquote, essential. But to me, the way this comes across as a board member, is the last sentence is the one that is, I'm struggling with that big time, because it, it hits me as boxing us in, and I, I hear that it's not, but that's the way it hits me. So, I'll, I'll probably, unless there's some modification to that sentence, I'll have a little difficulty in voting for this when it comes to the time to vote for it.
I'll, I'll answer that in a minute, but why don't we let Ed go ahead?
I agree with Trustee Erickson on concerns about restricting this. And let me kind of take us back here to the comments that were made, you know, previous weeks in different times, we've talked about it, and that is the need for change, the willingness to try different things. And I think in an educational institution especially, we need to be open to new ideas. We don't want to- We don't want to box ourselves in so tightly here and this resistance gives an excuse. Intended or not, it gives an excuse for the opportunity to say, nope, you know, we're not going to look at those other options. In this particular timeframe, the 21st century, I think it's extremely critical that we look at the change that we've so often talked about, different types of changes, that we give consideration that maybe this twenty-eight, twenty-nine hours, maybe these outcomes that we're looking at are not necessarily what we need two years from now. Things change very quickly and I don't want to be sitting here with a policy that we're really directing to this institution that says resist change because that's really what it says, resist change. I would rather we make the mistake to kind of do some things that if you look at your fast food industry has done over the years. If you take a look at McDonald's when they first started out, they had a very simple, very non-complex menu. You wanted a burger, you got a burger. You wanted fries, you got a fry and you got a drink. And then all of a sudden, we had salads and we had chicken and we've got anything you want. There's, it takes you an hour to read the menu. And what happens typically in industry and, and education is no different. You know, you try a number of different things. You look at what your market is suggesting to you, you put in the variations and you test that market and you see what's in demand. And you'll notice that many of those, in fact, if you look at some of the, I'll say, newer fast food burger joints out there, they went to a very shortened menu. That was their big deal. We truly are fast food and that's what I want you to think about here when you lock yourself into this and I really do see it as locking. Resist the temptation to expand. I want to give an incentive to people to look at ways we can better serve students. That doesn't always mean that we expand, but it looks for variations and maybe we do need to add a couple more hours or another course. I would suggest that if we look back at this institution and other institutions, you will find that their university studies, programs at UW, hours over the years have gone from, I think we were down to about thirteen hours at one point for a general ed and then we expanded and then we went back down and, and then we expanded again and the university's done that. In fact, I read in the paper and it concerns me a little bit, the university's not going to finish this off till 2015 is, is when they're looking at it. So I'm, I'm a little nervous because I've watched the university and worked with them before when, when they say they're doing it and then it collapses and they don't do that, you're sitting there with a basket of fruit that nobody wants to buy. So, you know, I really think we have to be careful. But my perspective is this curriculum, proliferation of the curriculum, I'm not sure I want to even have that title on there. What I'd really like to have, if I'm hearing Teri and, and Dr. Schaefer and, and Dr. Fiero, if I'm hearing that correctly, I'm really hearing you say that we need to consistently pay attention to what we're offering. And so this ought to be a policy, I think, that talks about the board seeking the effort by the instructional area here to provide a consistent review of gen ed. That what we really ought to have in this policy is this effort to have a periodic review, maybe not of the whole thing, but at least every other year, we ought to be taking a look at what constitutes verbal communications because that changes. I mean, good heavens, written communications, is that handwriting? Do we even teach writing the way we used to teach? I mean, it's, it's changed. What we teach in terms of computers has changed. So what does that really mean? So I'd rather see this policy kind of reworked and looked at from the perspective that we, the board are giving the college the direction to review this, yeah, keep, pay attention to, don't expand. I totally agree, we don't want to be asking students to do things that don't benefit them, but that ought to be the guidance, that we review and use those for guiding principles to make sure that we are consistently doing this over time. There's one other part, let me step into that's in the previous sentence at the end that Dr. Schaefer knows, I've struggled with this and I continue to struggle, whack the trustees have struggled with this. I don't know who doesn't struggle with this, but when I look at the sentence, it says student completion and success. Is completion not success? What, what is, that definition for success is very difficult to handle on.
And where are you at? Excuse me?
Same, same, number five.
Right below that. Oh, I see. Towards student completion is, I got it.
Right, the sentence that precedes that.
Thank you.
And so the reason I bring that up along with my agreement with Dr., or Trustee Erickson is that I think maybe we need to consider that a little bit too. I don't know if we need both words there or some other word. I'm just, and I'm not a great wordsmith, but they bother me that we kind of have completion and success. Thank you, Madam Joe.
Thank you very much and Teri, if you return again.
Thank you. If I could just respond to Trustee Moser's concern about completion and success and I understand where your concern is generated. It can be looked as, at, from the perspective that both of those terms are synonymous. I would suggest that they're not. You can have students that complete a program and they will go out into the workforce and they will not be a success because perhaps that program hasn't provided the diverse curriculum, the practical and relevant curriculum that's going to really generate the success that they need in that, in the workplace. So perhaps that provides a different perspective for you to think about that.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
I, I don't have a problem. See, you then took this a step further and provided this clarification. You're saying success in, in life, you know? I, I'm a little hesitant, hesitant to want to say success means employment success because we can offer all those outcomes and be successful in providing them, but we know individuals are just that, they're individuals and no matter what we've done, they may not be successful and the economy may not provide them that opportunity. So if you want to do that, if we want to say completion and success and define it that way, I'm fine with that, but give some clarity there because standing together like that, I'm just not comfortable with it.
Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
Madam Chair, Trustee Moser. Yes, I, I will agree with probably a little clarification, but actually as Teri was mentioning this, today when I walked into the cafeteria, the, sometimes at the cafeteria we get people from the community, they like to go to the cafeteria and have lunch here and there were a couple of employers actually and they were speaking with a couple of faculty members and I overheard one saying, yes, but finishing the program doesn't mean the student is work-ready. So if we go to the first part of that sentence that says, this curriculum must be practical and relevant to the purpose of the degree and certificate programs offered, that basically put the onus on us for us to maintain the curriculum practical and relevant to the purpose of the credential we're offering. So we go back to what I said earlier, when, when we look at the proliferation of the curriculum, I guess we could use review of the curriculum as a better way to title that, but what that basically, in my mind and the intention of this, is to force us to continue to look at what is happening outside and based on what we learn of what is happening outside through advisory boards and employers' feedback, incorporate that into our curriculum so they are able to successfully complete a relevant program, the, hopefully have our students be work-ready because apparently some of ours are not and, and, and so we need to sort of keep an eye on that, so.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
I, I totally agree with what you're saying. I, I don't disagree with you and that's, that's why in terms of that five oh, that whole policy, you just restated what I think is so important, that we constantly be reviewing this and I think this board, to me, we would want to have something in there that, that really emphasizes that's going to take place, that, you know, if, if, if we're serious about this, I think we don't just give it words, we put it in timeframes and it comes before us. You know, the procedure, I think there's going to be a procedure relevant to this, I would assume and that procedure, I would hope if the policy is stated as such that it talks about review, as you just pointed out, I think is critical, then I think the procedure has to follow with some timeframes. Either that or the board has to step in and say, we want to, we want to have a review or see something on this every two years, but I don't know if that's, now we're beginning to dig a little deeper than I think maybe we want to, but it would sure be important to me as a board member that we see something on this because a lot of work's gone into it.
Oh, yeah.
A lot of sweat, tears, agony, pain and it does on this. I mean, I've been around when we've gone through this multiple times and so I would like to see it be consistent, not just when a, a president comes in and, and we're doing some different, new things, new VPs, you know? This ought to be something that's the board's expecting.
Dr. Schaefer?
Madam Chair, members of the board, so a couple of things just wanted to hit on here. I, I, you know, I, I think there, there's a few things we can change if I'm, I'm reading some of the comments right and, you know, ultimately completion is a component of success and, and certainly if we want to take that interpretation that success incorporates that, we can simplify it by just saying success. But similarly to your comments about, about, you know, narrowing our focus, the reason it doesn't say success in their job or success in their life or success in getting out of the class they're in, it's intended to be broad and, and we will consistently and continually have to evaluate what it means to be a successful student, a successful individual. But we could, we, I mean, completion is a component of that, it's there and perhaps it's there because in the, the era we live in, there's a focus on completion. I don't think that is necessarily the, the issue. To the review component, one of the policies that you'll be seeing here in the, the near future is a policy that refers to one of the things that Dean Harper hit on and that's program review and I, I think it's certainly appropriate within a policy on academic program review to state that the general education curriculum will be periodically reviewed just like the overall curriculum will and I, I see no problem with incorporating, with incorporating that in there. And so, so I, I think we'll get at that, certainly relabeling this, the review of the curriculum if that, you know, we're, we're, believe it or not, we're actually talking about the same things. We're not talking about restricting what we're trying to do, what we're talking about is focusing what we want, we're trying to do. We're talking about ensuring that the curriculum is adequate, it's appropriate, it's relevant, but it's designed so students can succeed and that means that we continually have to look at that because if we have a curriculum that students don't succeed after they're participating in, if it's not relevant for the time, you're right, it may mean that down the road, that twenty-seven credits doesn't do it and we may find that as we assess that, there needs to be additional writing coursework and time in there. When we do that assessment, we would say, the curriculum is not relevant because it is not preparing them to be successful in writing, it needs additional credits. That's all inherent in there, but somewhere that language is giving the different impression and, and I don't know if it's the resist the temptation to expand piece in there that, that needs to be tweaked and that's where I would look especially to, to Trustee Erickson and Trustee Moser, is that, if that's the piece, I mean, let's, let's nail it down right because I really actually think we're talking about the same, the same things, it's just being interpreted two ways and we don't want a policy statement that, that, that leads to, to misinterpretation, I would say.
Madam Chair, that's exactly what triggered me, that phrase. You know, resist the temptation, that, that triggered me right from the very beginning.
Trustee DeBois?
I know, I keep going back to the secondary education, but you know, you take every paper, every newspaper, every news magazine you pick up. Don, you're right and you were good to bring this up and it's been a good discussion because first it was no child left behind and all the fighting nationwide that went through this, now it's the common core and, and there are people that are just so upset about this and they're all, well, it's all dealing with curriculum and how you're going to design the curriculum. And Brenda, I heard that your husband is short a huge number of math teachers for next year because of a new math requirement that's coming into the, because of the, whether it's state curriculum or what. But I, I think this is something we need to really examine very closely and talk about very closely because there is a tie-up between what goes on in secondary and comes out here.
Absolutely.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Trustee Moser.
And with Dr. Schaefer's comments and Dean's comment, I, I really appreciate this, this concern about success out there by the employers, but part of me is, is sitting here knowing that in your area, in the health sciences in, in particular, we have more success, we're better able to measure success than we are in many of the other areas. They're very challenging because students, employers don't return surveys, we just don't get the information. I did research on my master's years ago on that and found the best way at that time was to have contact by the faculty person. I mean, all the different methods, surveys, you know, it just, your better rate is going to be having the faculty. Well, when you've got fewer faculty, which is what you encounter in community colleges, that's difficult to have the ability on their part to do that. I know some of the faculty here know where some of their graduates are and whether they're successful, if, if we say job success is the key, but I, shorten that up, like we've got a long meeting. When Joe looks at that, I, I'm a little concerned, how do we measure that? How do we get the data? Because that bothers me, it has for years, it's always been a challenge and I don't know as we've, I don't know how we're going to do that because we say we want the success, but if we say that, then how do you measure it? That becomes an issue. I don't think we ought to be trying to do something there that we can't or have very little ability to do, so that, that really concerns me.
Madam Chair, Trustee Moser, you know, I think, I, I actually I feel less concerned about our ability to, to do that, at least at the summit of the high level, because of the way we've structured our key performance indicators. So at the outcome level and even the way program review will fall with that, success will be measured in multiple ways, whether it's transfer for a transfer program, employment for employment program, successful completion of courses for course programs, retention, all of those different things that will give us the picture of whether or not students are successful. And then one of the most important ones, in my opinion, as it pertains to, to this curriculum specifically, is how we actually evaluate and, and, and assess whether or not students can accomplish the, the competencies, the outcomes that are delineated within the general education framework. And if you've had a chance to look under, I think it's Appendix B within the curriculum document you have, the faculty have spent a considerable amount of time in developing criterion rubrics that basically show what do we mean when we say a student has the ability to foster teamwork, consider the needs of others and at what levels? And what, what is really impressive about what we're doing with the courses that come forward to meet these general education requirements is they will have common assessments that they will give to those students to say, can students do this? And we will track and record those data, we will be able to look at longitudinally whether or not the courses that are part of the general education are truly developing in students the competencies that we say that they're going to do and if they're not, then we look at the content, the curriculum, the, the extent of the curriculum, the number of credits. This piece isn't done yet, but I can tell you what, this is the big piece when it comes to actually assessing and measuring whether or not students can successfully solve problems, communicate, work as a team member, appreciate other cultures or aesthetic elements, aesthetic beauty and those types of things. And so I, I think we can get there, we've got work to do, there's no doubt, Trustee Moser, I agree with you, but, but I think we can get there and we've got a great step in, in, forward in, in these documents and the work done here.
Madam Chair, one quick comment.
Sure.
Which Joe can answer quickly. Where are we at in terms of the commission longitudinal?
That doesn't sound like a quick one. Is that a quick one?
Yeah, Ma- Madam Chair, Trustee Moser, he knows as much about this, I think, as I do. We, we are still moving slowly forward on the state longitudinal data system. We are gaining some traction now, but there are als, there's also some traction to move towards accessing data that we believe we can have right now instead of waiting for that system to be in place, but it's, it's still a work in, in progress certainly. I, Madam Chair, just to wrap this up, I will work and I think I, I think I can find language that will essentially have the meaning that we're all talking here, but flip the tense, flip the, the focus on a positive thing about ensuring that we review and maintain a curriculum that is essential for student completion, student success. And so let me tweak with that and I think we can get there. And I agree with Trustee DeBois, this is exactly the type of conversation that you should be having as trustees, so I, I appreciate that all. If, if I may, Madam Chair, before we move on, I just want to reiterate a, a couple of, of things here. We will be coming back to you in, in two weeks at your main meeting, asking you essentially to approve and author, and authorize our ability to award a certificate. um, and author, and, and authorize our ability to award a certificate of completion recognizing the general, the satisfactory completion of the general education transfer block. Um, when we, when we set down this road to do this, we, we really had three overarching goals in mind. One was to, to review and update our general education program, show that it was relevant, that it was comprehensive, yet fits within our, our, our curriculum the way we need to. The second one was to identify a way to celebrate the completion of general education. Um, I had, um, Anne Murray from our institutional research, um, office, uh, pull some data on our transfers to UW. And over the past five years, thirty-five percent of our students who transfer to UW do so without a degree, but they've completed over thirty credits. And when you look at the courses that are predominantly taken, they're general education courses. So we wanna recognize something students already recognize, which is general education has incredible value, even if I don't complete a degree from L triple C. We wanna get them to complete a degree. We want them to be here. Thirty-five percent of our students that transfer are not. Let's celebrate that. That's the intent behind the transfer block. And then the next goal is the piece we're still working on, and that's articulating a block completion here with a block completion of UW's transfer curriculum, the USP program, to really streamline that process if a student wants to, to, to leave. But this is essentially a credential that the trustees will confer. It's a certificate of completion recognized as the L triple C general education transfer block. As a result, that requires your approval and will require the community college commission's approval as well.
I really, thank you, Joe. I really like this and I approve of it because we are giving them the foundation here. We will be giving them the foundation to move on, to explore any type of study they wish at the university. They can expand their knowledge there. We wanna give them the foundation here at L triple C. And, and I applaud you all because I think this is exactly what we wanna do here. We don't wanna send them there without any kind of credential at all. So I think I'm for it. But I, I like your idea of reworking that sentence, and if you would like to send that to us, um, I don't think we'll be able to approve it in two weeks, will we?
Uh, M- M- Madam Chair, substantially, it's one sentence there.
One sentence.
And I don't think it intend, it, I don't think it changes the, um, the intention of the policy. It changes the way we phrase it so that it'll be easier to be interpreted. So, um, I, I, you know, I'm certainly happy to kick it off and bounce it off you as trustees between now and then. But I don't, I don't think that change, um, and I'll look at Trustee Moser and Trustee Erickson, if we hit that sentence right, I don't think that change substantially impacts your, the, the, the policy nor your ability to consider it in two weeks.
Do you agree? Don, Ed?
Well, I think so. I just had one question for clarification. There's one set of, uh, that is like fifteen hours, there's another set that's twenty-seven to twenty-eight, the applied versus the associate arts. Uh, are you talking both giving a certificate for the fifteen and giving a certificate for the twenty-seven and twenty-eight? Or just what, the twenty-seven, twenty-eight?
Yep. Madam Chair, Trustee Moser, that is a, a good question. The transfer, no, the transfer block is intended for, um, the associate of arts, the associate of science degrees only. Those degrees that are designed per, per policy and procedure under degrees and certificates for transfer to the university. It recognizes a general education block that would be similar to what they would be expected to take at the university. We believe and, and we want to have general education inherent in all of our programs. Um, the fifteen credit block is what we expect at a minimum within our associate of applied science degrees, but there's no credentialing associated with that.
This has been a great conversation. Anything else? Ed, this is your last chance. Okay, we'll move on then. Thank you. Did you have anything else to say? Presenters? You did a great job. Thank you very much. Okay, so where are we now?
Level one reports.
And I'm so sorry, level one folks, um, you've spent a long time listening to us. So it's your turn. Thank you.
Uh, Ma- Madam Chair, members of the board, uh, just as our presenters get ready and Vicki gets, uh, Pete Tilly on the phone, I'm gonna ask, uh, Tim McNamara to introduce our presenters tonight, but just as a, a refresher from the conversation you had at dinner, um, these level one reports are before you on two projects. And they're here again tonight for your information, for your questions. They will be back on, at, on the twenty-first for your approval. They are the very, very first stage of planning with any type of projects and any type of, um, construction project. But they're a requirement to kick into the process for authorization. To actually do construction, that would be over a million dollars. So, um, so they're, they're a very brief analysis that look at conceptually what we're trying to accomplish, what types of issues, things we want to, uh, address, what we believe the cost would be, what design elements would be. But, but it's here for you today so that we can actually get it into the process and we would have authorization from a, a, a year from now. And so with that, Tim, Mike, have you introduce our, our speakers tonight and then we'll jump right in.
Madam Chair, members of the board, uh, the first program tonight is the PE renovation, DEE building renovation. We've been working with Tobin and Associates for probably six or eight years, but just recently in six to eight, last six or nine months, we've set home this project into a nutshell. And tonight they're here to present what we have as a level one for the PE renovation. We have Ken Tobin from Tobin and Associates, Matt Trademic, who's gonna actually do the presentation.
Hello, it's Tim Ted. My name is Matt Trademic from Tobin and Associates. And as was also mentioned, this is a level one study, so it's a very, fairly high-level analysis of the, the general aspects of the project. And so I'm going to run through some of the basic questions that are asked by that level one study and what our response would be. So first of all, of course, is what is the project? And as Tim mentioned, it's the, the PE building. And it's a renovation of that building, or more specifically, a renovation of select parts of that building. And, uh, if you don't know, this, uh, PE building was built originally in nineteen seventy-three. There was a fairly substantial addition in nineteen eighty-five and a, uh, interior remodel in nineteen ninety-eight. So there is certainly some updating to be done and there is some reorganization to be done. And the, I guess the overall goal of this project is to maximize the existing space. We haven't included in the scope any addition that is outside of the current footprint. So everything we're proposing is within the current shell of the building. Next is why is the project needed? And the primary or the initial need for the project, uh, has to do with a lack of space or a lack of certain types of space. And some of those in specific context are athletic coaches' offices, athletic locker rooms, team rooms and classrooms, a, a dedicated aerobic center, as well as concession and ticketing and some other smaller spaces. But those are some of the larger components that initiated the, the project. So after establishing that initial need, the project is also developed to include some revitalization of the building and reactivation of the building with hopes of transforming it as much as possible into a, a rec center more like what might have founded other institutions and more in tune with the concept of lifelong wellness. Another aspect of a level one study is looking into some of the major considerations and concerns moving forward, some of the stumbling blocks we might run into, which is maybe more of a concern on a new construction project, whereas this is a existing building, we're remodeling on the interior of this building. So we know we have the utilities we need within reason. Uh, we know the building is already owned by L triple C, the land is to find its own. So there is no land acquisition or, or legal constraints to the property itself that would affect the project. Also, we need to consider, um, things such as asbestos. There was an asbestos study done in nineteen eighty-three. Uh, the results of that study are no longer around. And so when we further develop the scope of the project, we need to probably look into that again, have another study done and identify any asbestos or other, uh, materials that'll need consideration prior to construction. It's been identified that the electrical service will probably need to be upgraded for this project. As well, an additional water line may be needed for fire suppression. And there will be need to, there will be some consideration for cooling, which is not currently in the building, will need for some of these spaces. Additional considerations would be some of the spaces that we're, uh, taking over. There are some storage rooms, there's some spaces that need to be reallocated in a, a smart way, a way that frees up some space for needed space, but, but doesn't, uh, create a hardship because we're kicking storage out of the building. So next, what are some of the opportunities that are presented to us as we start to look at the possibility of this renovation? And, uh, as I mentioned, it's an opportunity to reorganize the building, to think critically about how it's used, how people move through the building. It's an opportunity to diversify the building and add some, some function to the building that is not there currently. And, and also an opportunity to provide something for everyone. This was started with a, a bit more of the athletic group in mind, but as we looked at some of the ways the building could be modified, uh, we've been looking for ways to incorporate benefit for PE use as well as the student body. And, uh, also the, the multipurpose room itself being used for large meetings and how can we accommodate that in this renovation? So next, at a, at a conceptual level, what could this renovation design look like? And first I'd like to start by looking at the, the current floor plan. I don't know how well it shows up on, uh, the screen to everybody, but there are some areas in gray, mainly down in this corner, the mat room, and, uh, this area here is one of the others. And so most of our renovation work is contained within those areas, areas like the pool and the gym, the racquetball courts. We're not touching. It would be completely outside of the scope. And one, uh, opportunity we're exploring are, uh, underutilized spaces, which is part of what, uh, got this project started. There is like this large storage room, a storage room along the back of the current dance studio, and, uh, what's considered to be a somewhat underutilized tennis court. These are some areas we've identified as underutilized, large spaces that could be redeveloped to bring some of these new functions into the building. Additionally, there are a couple of spaces, the mat room and this, uh, tennis court and the multipurpose room in particular, which have a high enough volume that they could accommodate a second level and provide us an additional, uh, avenue for square footage within the current shell. So this, and I understand this might be hard to see for everybody in the back, this is our conceptual layout. This came from a few iterations and working with Pete and others to, to, uh, develop the program. And we kind of backed into a typical program statement that you might see in, in most architectural projects where we identify the spaces and the areas required for those spaces. We basically worked with the space available and some of the requirements that Pete had given us for functions such as the locker rooms, coaches' offices, and worked with the plan to, to find a mesh of square footages for those spaces and where they could fit. So the basic concept we have is reestablishing this entry as the main entry to the building. It looks like that may have originally been the main entry and over time, it has shifted to this side.
It was.
But if we're reactivating this side of the building substantially through this renovation by remodeling this corner as the, I guess you could say the student rec center component, the aerobic center, the weight room, the climbing wall would be dressed up a little bit, uh, some of the athletic locker rooms, team room, classroom. And as well as understanding that there's a lot of activity that happens in the multipurpose room and any renovation in this corridor lobby could benefit activities in that space. All these things start to point to reestablishing this entry as the main entry.
Sounds good.
And then developing a hub of the building and perhaps a new check-in station that's more centrally located to how the building could operate after the renovation. This is the second level of our concept. And as I mentioned, there is the space above the mat room and the space above the underutilized tennis court where we've captured some second floor area. This space is currently identified as a Pilates yoga studio. And this corner is where we have the coaches' offices as well as a conference room and a student study lounge. So as I mentioned, a, a major component or benefit of this project is bringing a little bit more diversity into this building by reallocating some of those spaces and bringing more offices, athletic locker rooms. And I should mention, a, a major component of the locker room part of this is to separate recreational lockers from athletic lockers, which is kind of a twofold benefit. Number one, it allows for, uh, more of a collegiate level athletic locker room where we can incorporate the, uh, the finish you would expect in a typical collegiate athletic locker room and incorporate the coaching function that happens within those locker rooms. And at the same time, tailor the existing locker rooms as the recreational locker rooms. And as I also mentioned, we'll pick up some chair storage, an AV room for the multipurpose room to try and increase its functionality as a large meeting space. Uh, improve the training exam room, incorporate some concessions into an actual room instead of just needing to be a table in the hall. As well as add some, a, a field access supply room on the outside of the building for use by the soccer teams in filling water jugs and assa- accessing their supplies without needing to go inside the building. These two graphs on the right, uh, I just thought they fairly simply showed this increase in diversity. And where this comes from is the, uh, recalculation of the space use codes. And so in the renovation, we've introduced several new space use codes. And you can relatively see that in the additional colors that show up in the pie chart and the, the further distribution of space. And so the last part of this is the reactivation and the, uh, remodeling of the space as far as the aesthetic component. And this space is, uh, again, that, that underutilized tennis court that would become the student rec center aerobic area. And we selected that court because it's on an outside wall. The outside walls are precast double Ts. And, uh, without getting into too many details at this level, we've assumed we can take out a certain number of those Ts and begin to open that space up and get some daylight views out to the soccer field and start to bring a little more life into this space, maybe introduce some materials that aren't present now, natural materials, brighter materials. And then continue an interior design similar to this throughout that entry corridor and lobby and, uh, try and carry this feel throughout the building and bring a little bit more life into it. Another part of the level one study is, uh, ensuring that there's public input and, and an opportunity for the public to have input. So we had an open house on April sixteenth. There were a lot of, uh, positive comments and there were also a lot of really helpful, uh, critical comments, some of which include, uh, the storage. As I mentioned, a lot of the space we're using used to be storage. And we have ways that we've planned to reallocate that storage and find smart ways to move things around, shuffle things around and make sure that we're providing adequate storage while we're using some of that space for other uses. Uh, there were several comments about the weight room, making sure that's right size for athletic use plus rec use and making sure the balance between that and the aerobic center are, uh, correct. Considering a second entry to the pool, we'd have to look at the feasibility of that, but it, it goes in hand with the reorganization of the space and the re-establishment of that original main entry. And there were many more comments that we have logged in our notes and in our reports that we'll carry forward into the next phase of the project as we dig deeper into the actual design. So that, are there any questions at this time?
Questions? No questions?
Madam Chair?
Oh, yes.
I was hoping somebody else would go first.
Oh, okay.
Uh, the, the dance studio, uh, which currently has the aerobic equipment and that's going to that new location, uh, what's gonna happen to the, the dance studio in terms of the future? Where would the dance studio be or where will there be a floor for dancing?
The concept right now is that the dance studio would stay where it was. The aerobic equipment that's up here would of course move out. There would be the potential, this room, this long room along the back is storage and most, what takes up most of the space there are some of the stationary bicycles. And this is getting a little off topic from your question, but part of our storage solution is to move these bicycles out to where the aerobic equipment was, freeing up storage space here, but nonetheless maintaining that room as the dance studio. But also separating, I should say, the yoga and Pilates classes to the second floor studio so that this can be more specifically dedicated to dance.
Trustee Moser?
Two things. First, how will this affect the use of the multipurpose area by the community? Because there's been extensive, you know, free-for-all goes on in there. I think there's, uh, there's just a number of things from four H and everything else that's gone on in there.
Health fair and stuff like that.
I'm just wondering, since it is a, a key tool used by the community, are we changing that or not?
Well, my answer to that would be the, the, the biggest change is going to be the size of that space. So that may be the biggest concern. I think what we're trying to do, assuming that the trade-off of reducing the size of that space is a net gain by gaining this stu- is a net gain by gaining this student rec aerobic component. So that, the jury may still be out on whether or not that is agreeable to reduce the size of the space. If it is, what we're trying to do with this, which is the west wall of that space, is trying to make whatever we can, or trying to do whatever we can to make this renovation accommodate and enhance those activities in the multipurpose room. So we've planned on a chair storage room, an AV room right now. As design progresses, that could include AV accommodations for this west wall becoming a presentation wall, a backdrop for speakers. Uh, and I'm not sure where it could go, but that is the intent, that we would use that wall as our way to benefit the mixed use of that space.
So we're, we're really going to get some additional usage. That's what I'm looking for. I don't want to lose what we've been able to provide the community with, but we're, we're going to be able to add some additional services to the community with that.
Yes.
Um, just one second. Pete is on the phone and perhaps he would like to make a comment. Pete? Pete?
Yes, can you all hear me?
Yes, we can. Would you like to say something at this time?
I'm driving traffic and, uh,
Oh.
It's kind of a quiet place here, but, um, yeah, I, I appreciate Matt kind of taking, you know, and explaining the whole project and I think has done a terrific job with that. And, um, I really believe that this is, uh, the project is truly beneficial to, you know, not only athletics, uh, which will help us tremendously to provide space for our athletes locker room wise and, uh, you know, with the, with the weight room and, and all those kinds of things from a training perspective, but it's really tremendous benefits for overall student body, campus recreation wise, as well as our college and community. And I think with everything that Matt has talked about, uh, will be a real tremendous factor to everybody involved. Every time I get, um, involved with this project, if I'm talking about it, I get really excited just because of the impact I really think it has to have on college overall. So thank you all for taking the time to, uh, take a look at this and I'd be glad to answer any questions for you.
Thank you, Pete. Um, Doug?
An additional question and it just, the pool has pretty intensive usage, I would think. I don't know if Pete can hear this or not, but my understanding is the pool gets used quite a bit. If you look at the recreation schedule, it, it seems like that's used pretty intensively. And I, I know it's not part of this project, but I'm, I guess I'm asking the question since that gets a lot of usage. Are we missing anything by not making sure we don't have to come back a little later and do something with the pool? That would be more efficient to do it now if we need to do anything to, you know, upgrade the area a little bit if we need to. I, I'm assuming we don't need to since it wasn't spoken to, but I just have to ask the question because I know that's used.
Matt?
I thought it could be used and, um, I think, um, you know, it's, it's a little bit landlocked in our building. Um, because of, um, you know, if we want to look at any type of expansion or anything, we, you know, take away all the space and that, uh, in the building. So I think that would be something that, you know, from an architecture standpoint, we, you know, we maybe take a look at. But at the same time, if we have excess use with that, we may have to take a look at how we evaluate the usage and the overall planning of that. And maybe, you know, carve out some additional pieces if we feel that's necessary. But as far as expansion of that goes, if that's the, you know, the direction you're alluding to, I'm not sure that's, you know, something that we really want to take a serious look at just because of the space, uh, the minimal space we have to work with at this point.
I'm, I'm sorry. I misled you there. I wasn't looking for expanding, but rather,
Okay.
whether we needed any reconditioning of that space. That's the way I should have phrased that.
And I,
Oh, I see. Okay. I understand. Um, you know, that makes it come to that we really want to take a look at, that's a really good point to bring up. Um, because, uh, you know, if there's anything that we need to do to enhance that, I mean, you know, I've been in there many times and, you know, the pool environment is, is living corney and it's, it's not a great environment, but at the same time, um, it's kind of way into a pool dollar. So, um, but, you know, yeah, that's a good point to make, to look at and evaluate at this point. Uh, when looking at these things in that area, we may want to seriously take a look at that. So, you know, I appreciate that comment.
I do believe the locker rooms were remodeled not too long ago.
The pool locker rooms?
Yes.
Okay.
So that may be a step in that direction, but we could consider additional work as well.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you so much and thank you for being so patient.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, Pete.
Great. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Good night.
Madam Chair, the, the next project we have is the Learning Commons. And, uh, our director of firm Bennett Foyd, who has been helping us for the last couple of three months, and Martha Bennett, she's been like, uh, lovely one for the Learning Commons.
Bye-bye.
Thank you. Um, as Tim said, I'm Martha Bennett. I, I just have to say how enlightened I have been, made enlightened by the conversations that you've had early on. And, and it's been so great to be a fly on the wall listening to this thing because it reminds me why I enjoy working with community colleges so much. Because at, you know, at the heart, at the core of what you're all about is being very responsive to change. And, you know, understanding the levels of like curriculum development that require, all the requirements to make you be able to be responsive to change is, um, only scratched the surface today. But it just reminded me that that's one of the, one of the reasons I like working with community colleges because you're just like always on your feet. What's next? What's next?
Not jaded yet.
And I think, I think it's also really important as a, as a sort of a preface for the Luden Library expansion because from my perspective, I really do view libraries as a reflection of our culture. And as the community college culture and the way we view the community college library culture changes, this library does need to change. I think, uh, a little background on this, this library, it was a year older than the rec center. It was originally built in seventy-two and it was back when you had about a thousand FTE at LCCC. And then in two thousand and eight, there was a, a little infill of a courtyard area that gave them about twelve to fifteen percent more space. So you fast forward to twenty-fourteen and you have four thousand FTE. So you've quadrupled your student body and you've increased the library by twelve percent. So I have to commend the librarians and the Learning Center Task Force group because what they have done is in fact, I think, focus in on what they need to have the library and the Learning Commons evolve, um, even within very constricted space. We always, we always like to show at the very beginning of our Level One reports, what the essence of the project is. And so for this project, it's, um, first of all, it's LCCC's own funds because that's of course what the state first wants to see is if you're hitting them up with money. So it's LCCC's own funds of up to three and a half million dollars to have a modest expansion and a real renovation of the existing library space to more respond to the twenty-first century student. Um, we have in there that, you know, ultimately it'll be twenty-two thousand square feet once the expansion is done. And we're not sure exactly how quickly the money will be raised, but the construction period will be about nine months. Um, as far as the project need, um, going back to the, the history of the space, the librarians in their task force report, which is an excellent report, if you guys haven't read it, I strongly urge you to read it. Over the last five years, visits to the library have doubled and this was in, within the existing space. And then data researches have tripled. So we've evolved from nineteen-seventy-two to books to twenty-fourteen and a lot more computer usage. And what happens is that as, as, um, other functions grow into the library, seats somehow walk out the door. And so, one of the problems that we have with the library right now is that there's less than four percent of FTE seats in the library and the recommendation is always for ten. Now, community colleges can be a little more flexible, but we were wanting to at least double the number of seats that we have now to just keep pace with what's going on. There was a huge survey done as part of the research, uh, the task force, um, because we've really only been on board for like two months. And they worked for over a year developing the report. And the survey showed that students would be, um, would make use of a twenty-four hour computer lab. Well, we understand from a practicality standpoint that you might just, it might not be twenty-four hours, but extended computer lab time would be something that we really wanted to work for. Also, the writing center right now is just kind of a little corner in the room of the existing instructional room to actually give it a, a good place within the Student Success Center. The math lab, we looked hard at the math lab. It's just been renovated. And the, uh, curriculum and the requirements for lab hours is, is sort of in flux right now. Um, and due to budgetary constraints and the fact that it's just been remodeled, that won't be part of this scope of work. It could in the future. The language lab, which is currently sort of outside the, uh, square footage of the, of the library and Learning Resource Center, we'd like to kind of bring that into the library so it could feel more a part of the Student Success Center and the Learning Commons. The Student Success Center itself had to shrink to move into the library. And so, the goals for this project is to expand it back to the size that it has now learned it needs to be. Also, a place where students could develop and practice presentations like this, um, having a special group room for that. The Center for Teaching and Learning, seeing the faculty member up here, members up here working on their presentations. I was just thinking about finally having a place for CTL to have a home. And that's one of the goals for this, in this scope of work, is to have a space within the library that's the home for the Center for Teaching and Learning where faculty can meet with each other and with students and be right there in the library. The exam lab and the testing lab is another area that we've been looking at and wanted to talk further with the group about because, um, they're two separate functions, the exam lab and the testing lab. But we've seen a trend in community colleges to merge those two because the usage in one is high at the beginning of the semester and the usage in the other is higher at the end of the semester. And there, although the, the functions are very different, the space needs and the technical needs with computers and, and tables and such is very similar. So it, it seems to be, um, a better usage of space when space is kind of tight. Also, the cafe with Starbucks just down the corridor, we will probably add some vending options right there in the area, but not adding another coffee bar within the library at this point in time. So we went through the numbers. We had a, uh, spent all day meeting with faculty and students and the users of the space and people off the street. We got anybody we could to come in and talk with us. And we came up with a square footage projection that shows, um, the amount that's, of space that we have that's dedicated to the library as far as the renovation goes, the amount of space that's dedicated to the Learning Commons. And then with the addition of space, how that sort of translates to the very end. So that you end up with the, um, two thousand more square feet than you have now ultimately. And then the reorgani- reorganization so that the Learning Commons is not quite tripled in, uh, in space. So also the existing plan, the colors aren't very saturated here, but, um, the sort of pale yellow is the existing library space and the pale blue is the Learning Commons space, which for right now only consists of the, uh, writing and communications center, the Student Success Center and the language lab, which is across the hall. So as we reorganize the space with an addition to the north, we will have the Learning Commons expanding, um, the computer lab, the space across the hall. We actually end up with more usable space because we've kind of grabbed the space across the hall to be more of the twenty-four hour learning area and really claim that for, uh, part of the Learning Commons. Uh, potentially being able to open up the door into the library more like, if you could imagine, similar to, to the way Starbucks does where it really folds back a wall and you have a big opening so that the whole entry to the library is much bigger. So you end up with, uh, expansion of, of library space in a large conference room. You end up with the Learning Commons expansion, um, that includes the, the, uh, computer lab that, uh, is open to the library and to the corridor. Reclaiming the space, um, across the hall for after-hours seating and tables and some more group rooms. And then bringing the language lab into the library proper. And the reorganization of both the collections and seating throughout the library so that we do end up with more seats, more computers scattered throughout the library. And the librarians themselves have been more than generous in helping us understand the way they can reorganize themselves and actually shrink in total square footage of office space so that more can go to the students in the library and Learning Commons space. So this is where we are. We have done some cost estimating that shows us what a two and a half million dollar project would look like and what a three and a half million dollar project would look like according to how the funding evolves. So we're, um, prepared to move forward. Questions? Yes, sir.
Justy Mojer.
You have indicated in here, at least I believe it's still in the proposal according to what I read, the multimedia production and presentation center and print production center. And I, I guess I'm just trying to get into my head when I first looked at this and, and went through it is, I'm not sure what we're trying to provide or do or what the rationale is for that space. And, and I only throw that out because I'm thinking, well, we have multimedia and we've got a lab for multimedia, at least to my knowledge, right? And we have, uh, print production, we have a printing center. I know the students don't access that, but we, are we talking about something other than, uh, copiers? I mean, I'm, I'm just a,
Yeah.
A little concerned about that space.
Yeah. And, and I think that, um, it sounds a little grander perhaps than it is because the, the print production is to have an area where students can come in and print out reports or print out papers that they need hard copies of, um, in an area that's easy to access and they can kind of get in and get out. It's not like you have to go somewhere or to Kinko's or someplace and, and actually have something printed for you, but that you can actually go in and click in your thumb drive and print something out quickly for a class or for a presentation. The media production area is an area not, not like the lab that's, uh, kind of more associated with the, um, a, a curriculum area. But for, for someone else who isn't involved in that curriculum area that can come in and plug in a PowerPoint and actually, you know, practice it and move slides around and stuff. And again, it's kind of in a group room that could be used for group, uh, practice of presentations and, or, or just of presentations and, or, or just a group room where kids could collaborate, which is another part of the sort of evolving changes in the way the library is functioning these days is allowing spaces for students to be able to do that sort of work, collaborative work. Did that answer your question, Darrell?
Yeah, I, I'm just thinking of, we have student rooms that they can utilize for some of those activities and other places. I'm, I'm just looking central location and trying to see the, the value of that. In a, in addition, I was trying to get a handle on, um, the math lab. So, and this is a broader question, math lab currently resides where?
Madam Chair, Trustee Mosher resides down at the east end of the art building. It is east, it is east, right? Yeah, I got it, yeah, east end of the art building. There were two classrooms, I believe we removed one wall to expand it. Um, what's the specific?
One oh two, one oh four.
One oh two, one oh four, art.
Okay. So broadly, and that's really kind of the concept of a successor, I, I don't know what to call it, but we're trying to centralize the location for, it, to, to me, we're centralizing the location for a number of different activities and thus, I'm wondering, what are we gonna do with the other areas that we've had? What, what do they fall back to? Because we're, we're adding space, I would assume, to facilitate functions that we have some space for now.
Yeah, um, Madam Chair, Trustee Mosher, uh, point of clarification, when, when the, the task force that, that put together the prospectus for the learning commons, um, finished their work, there were a variety of, of elements that, that they believed would be a useful component of this. As we got down to space constraints and looking at budgetary constraints, there were some that we said, you know what, they just need to stay where they're at. The math lab is one of those and, and unless I'm Karen, you know, tell me if I'm missing this, the math lab is not incorporated within this project. In fact, the only, only area that, that really is a, um, what I would say is a potential alternate on this that may free up existing space, that would be if we did something with the exam lab, which is currently over here in the, uh, the E C building. Um, if that were to end up in there. Otherwise, it's really just, um, an expansion of, of, of space that's down there to accommodate new or growing functions on campus. Um, so I, I think the exam lab and, and the exam lab adds additional expense and some space issues. So it's one of those things that, that would, would flow well with it, but even that one, I don't know if we're, you know, know for sure that that could actually end up in here. Are, are there other spaces that we would be freeing up through this? We're really just expanding and allowing certain functions to grow, is that correct, Karen?
That, that is correct.
Okay.
And, and, um, again, trying to look at those academic support services, putting them under one roof, but because of money and, and those limitations, then that's when we started pulling that with, like math lab and the exam lab.
Yeah, one of the additional costs that I'm, I'm not sure was originally, um, envisioned to be included was the fact, uh, because of the extent of the renovation, um, and the changes in building codes will be required to fire sprinkle the entire, that entire section of the building. So it was a cost that needs to be incorporated into this project cost.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
When I look at this, tell me if, if I missed something. We're still looking one level. Is there a second floor anywhere in this? Okay.
And, but that is a really good point because I think a lot of people had envisioned, you know, if money were no object, that, that you could wrap the existing library with a two-story addition. Um, and again, with the budgetary constraints and the fact that major utilities run. Right in the area for possible future expansion? That, um, between fire sprinkling the building and relocating utilities, we could use up the whole bu- budget and not really get much in the way of library renovation. So we opted to, um, if we do expand, expand into the easiest area to expand in at this time. But there's still an area where the library could expand with a two-story addition at a future date, phase two.
Madam Chair, probably a question for Tim maybe, but, or Joe. I, I'm just wondering on, on, if we go back to both the P E and the, the learning center here, I'm wondering what impact, if any, there is relative to maintenance, square footage and dollars we get from the state will increase, decrease? Has it gone away? I know there was, there's a lot of issues on that, but how does this impact us down the road for maintaining these?
Yeah, um, Madam Chair, Trustee Mosher, um, this one, if the addition went, it, this would add functionally an additional two thousand square feet to our total inventory, which would, you know, slightly increase than the amount of square footage, um, that we would do that. Tim, with the, uh, P E renovation, does the mezzanine level in the multipurpose room add square footage that would be included? So it would add another small number in the grand scheme of things in terms of the total square footage. I don't know that it would, it would boost us up significantly. It just may increase the, the amount of square footage that would go into the divvying up of that fixed pie for major maintenance.
Do those come on right away or like with new buildings, there's a delayed period of time of what, seven years or something or whatever?
Madam Chair, Trustee Mosher, that's a good question. I don't know that we can answer that till we sort of shake out how all the new arrangements with the state, um, are going to wake out, uh, work out. Typically though, uh, with the additional square footage and those types of things that, the way the Capcom model works, you populate it in, it has to go through the, the legislative process, but oftentimes funding for these types of spaces don't really happen then for another two years, um, after that. I don't know at this point for renovations and additions whether or not there will be any type of phased in, um, expectation or phased in, uh, um, calculation for, uh, for major maintenance. Tim, do you?
I don't know what the phase in is.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, Trustee DuBois.
I just would like to ask a question. Is the instructional, um, classroom and the student success center area, I know they're important, you know, in a library, but we're building a twenty-five million dollar building that is gonna have a student success center that Judy's gonna run and we have, uh, all these new classrooms. I'm just wondering, is this space gonna be able to be renovated into something else if those are finished and we get those, uh, part of, to be part of the thing? Or, or do they stay here?
As I understand it, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but the new building that's planned is for student services and, um, it may be just a matter of semantics, but I don't believe that the student success center is being replicated over there in the same way. This student success center is academic assistance for, you know, tutoring and, uh, one-on-one consultation with teachers and faculty as opposed to the student services, which is , uh, more focused on, um, financial aid and enrollment and advising, um, type functions.
No, Ma- Madam Chair, Trustee DuBois, it's a, a perfect answer. Um, this is academic students support versus the student services support. There will most likely be, at least I hope, some student gathering in student study areas in the new student services university center. There will be classrooms in there as well. Um, but these, these functions, um, the, the, the student success center, the tutoring center, the instructional classroom and what we do with library instruction are things we're currently using there that wouldn't be replicated in that, that new building.
Thanks.
Yeah. That's a good question.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Martha, you have done an awesome job. You have so much enthusiasm at such a late hour.
I love libraries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
We come back to the policies first meeting. Um, we have policy one point, two point two, which is membership of the board. Are there any, um, questions, concerns about this, uh, policy?
Madam Chair, I don't have any concerns. I just have, uh, an observation.
Okay.
Uh, I, I assume that the, the addition of, for the, the student ex officio on the board is what we're doing with this particular, uh, membership of, uh, for the board. Uh, I'm wondering if in, in the future, when we have something new, uh, to a, an existing policy, if we could have maybe in italics so that we could see quickly what the difference is in the policy?
Oh, a new, a new statement in the policy.
If there's, if there's something new or there's a change, that it's, uh, in italics or some other way of highlighting it so we can quickly see the diff- what's-
That's a good idea, like in red or blue or something old or something. Excellent idea.
Whatever you like.
Yeah, Madam Chair, uh, Trustee Erickson, that's a, a, a great, great idea. We'll do that. We'll use the track change function so you can identify what are the proposed changes. Um, you are correct in here that we're adding the, um, ex officio for the, um, the student government association, but your, your previous policy did not actually formally recognize the ex officio for the Albany County Campus Advisory Board and so we incorporated that in here as well. So it recognizes that you have the ability to, um, to create ex officio positions on the board, the parameters of those positions and the ones that you've done thus far would be a student and the Albany County Campus.
You've been rogue all this time. We're glad you're here.
Are there any other questions on that, membership of the board policy? If not, we will move on to nondiscrimination and anti-harassment policy, six point two. Were there any changes in that?
Yeah, um, Madam Chair, members of the board, both, uh, six point two and six point three were the, the two, uh, final, uh, H R policy ones. These were the ones that we had some changes that, um, were substantial enough. We wanted to put them back through the consultative feedback process. They've gone through that process through college council and through me. Uh, we received no feedback during the, the extended consultative feedback process. I think these are a much better, much better, much more better policy statements than, than what we had originally had and the, and the procedures are, are strong as well. Um, so they, they seem to have full support of the campus.
Questions? If not, then we will, um, okay these at our next meeting. This is the first reading. Thank you. Um, additional items, um, there were two letters that came to the campus, um, and I don't know if each of you got these in your packet, you did all get them in your packet. They're worth mentioning because, uh, one is, um, about Vito, who we all love, Vito down in financial aid and he's done a great job and I think it sounds like he helped someone one more time become successful. And the second, um, if you read it, I won't reread any part of it, but it's about how our stu- students come here and succeed. And so, that's wonderful news.
Yep, very great.
Thank you. Um, okay, we have, um, some meetings that we have to talk about. Our next meeting is May twenty-first, which will be a public hearing about the rules and that will be in Health Science Building, uh, one eleven, one thirteen, regular time. And then, we would like to change some meetings, um, here. We have the June fourth and the June eighteenth meeting, um, I believe those are set. We will not meet on the second of July because it sounds as though a lot of people travel during that period of time and so we are going to just have a July sixteenth meeting where we approve the budget. That's a normal meeting, but what I would like to do, and I've discussed this with a few people, is have a mini retreat on July eighteenth, which I know is the first day of Frontier Days, but it's very important that we do this because we want to review the, um, the communication survey that day and that'll take a little bit of time. We have to spend some time on that. And Joe would also like to present us with his goals. So, and I think it was the strategic plan, the, the third item that we were gonna review. And, and I don't know, but if there's anything you'd like to add to that day as a trustee or the folks sitting in the room?
Madam Chair, you say that's the first day of Frontier Days?
It's a Friday.
It's a Friday, it's not the Saturday.
No.
It's a Friday, okay.
Yes. And that's the only day we could come up with because it, I think Joe has a retreat with his, um, folks here on campus on the eleventh and then we don't wanna be meeting during Frontier Days. That would be bad. So, if that's okay, would that be all right with everyone to have a retreat on that day? We could come in about seven thirty, have breakfast and meet from about eight to noon? Yes? Trustee Mosher?
Yes, I, I was just saying that it would, I would like to have a little time to think about any additional items we might want on the agenda such as you mentioned, of course, yes. Not that we want very much because it seems to eat up a lot of time very quickly.
It is so true. Okay, well, um, and I think sometimes when we have retreats, like the one we had in Laramie, it was just, I said at the end of the day, it felt like the room was sucked out, the air was sucked out of the room. We were so exhausted and we covered so much that it was, it was pretty amazing. So the next board meeting would be, and we only have one in August, August twentieth, and then we would like to cancel September third because many of us will be gone that day, September third, and just have one meeting in September, September seventeenth, if that's okay with this board.
What's happening on September third?
Well, some of us are gonna be gone, like Joe and me, and I guess you can have a meeting if you would like, but.
Well, I think the principals aren't gonna be here. We might have a good meeting.
Well, you know, Kevin?
Well, well, the cats are away, right?
Kevin, well, I don't know, but you know, Jose and Kevin could run the meeting.
No.
What did you say on, at the next one, in September?
September seventeenth would be our only meeting. And I would like to do the roundtables, but I, um, for the, our three groups, but I would like to do that in a different way this year and, and we can discuss that later. So, that being said, um, yes?
Madam Chair, what do you mean by the roundtables?
The three groups that we had dinner with last year.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Um, and then we have new business. Um, I think that-
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Go ahead, you got new business, go ahead.
I was just gonna say that the Sage Trio, um, graduation is tomorrow night and if any of the trustees have not responded to them, please do so. It is an amazing evening. It is just amazing. So, we hope many of you can attend. I know some of you can't, yes, Dr. Shaver?
Madam Chair, I don't know if it's, it's new, but, yeah, it's sort of new business, but the one thing, you know, of course, we know we have commencement coming up and, uh, lots of different activities going on for the remainder of this week, Sage Trio, foundation meetings, um, some of you are attending the, the Chamber Annual Banquet. We've got great activities on, um, Saturday as associated with our commencement, but one of the things that, that I just wanted to take a moment and, and say, and there should be a press release on this and you'll get to see it, you've heard me allude to it. Um, but you, you recall that, uh, about six, seven months ago, you as a board signed onto a broader agenda with the, um, uh, the other community colleges in the state, um, as part of the Wyoming, a complete college Wyoming agenda, and that was to increase the number of credentials, um, produced by the colleges, essentially producing, increasing the number of graduates by the colleges, um, five percent each year through twenty, um, twenty-two, I believe. And even though I, I have to keep saying that our numbers are provisional until finals are completed this week, we need to make sure that, uh, Mr. Van Cleve passes his students and they succeed in all of those things. This is going to be exciting. This, this will be a record-setting class for L triple C and not only did we meet the five percent mark, I believe we will be well over twelve percent increase, um, in the number of the credentials that our, our graduates earn and so, um, and in many ways, that's a function-
So we have a cushion?
I've been told to make sure I have a cushion in those numbers. I, I hope it's higher, but I, I've been, they're, they're preliminary numbers, but, um, but that, that's really a result of the good work on campus and in many ways, just a result of our focus on student success because so many of the interventions, so many of the changes that we've been working on haven't fully matured and many of them haven't been fully implemented yet, but that's impressive. It's impressive for your leadership of this institution and what the folks are doing on here and it's something we certainly need to celebrate on Saturday and, and, you know, over the next few weeks because that's ultimately why we're here. And I just wanted to take the opportunity to make that statement, Madam Chair.
Well, we are very proud. I have to say that we are very proud and it will be a long graduation, but well worth it. And, and they've provided very good chairs this year with special cushions.
Okay, that's part of all this, all business. Okay, but in addition to that, I hope there's space, cause I'm looking at who's sitting next to each other.
Uh, let's not talk about that. I think they're making space.
We have eleven, twelve and thirteen without identifying who we are that have been sitting next to each other. And I'm, I mean, at last, uh, graduation was difficult for the three of us. We had a tough time trying to get up here, trying to get over here, whatever it was. We just were very uncomfortable. So thank you for that and I hope we have some space.
Madam Chair, members of the board, we will do our best for that. We'll also make sure that we've asked for, uh, speaker systems to be- We'll also make sure that we've asked for speaker systems to be pointed backwards as well so it's easier for the people on the platform party to hear.
We did listen last year about the chairs, the cushions, the space, and the monitors because it would be nice to hear the graduation ceremony presented because we couldn't hear it. But we will this year.
And we will have a brand-new LCCC backdrop, so Story Gymnasium is going to be looking even a bit sharper than it did last year. So it should be a great event.
Can't wait. Good job.
Madam Chair.
Yes, I have not forgotten you, Ed. Ed has something he would like to say.
Well, we have letters, we've got some individuals to the board, but I received Cheyenne Ruttery magazine for April 13th, April 23rd, excuse me, and was pleased to see in there a nice article on the LCCC Rotar Act, which not only spoke about the issue that Dr. Schaefer just brought up, but college completion leads to frequent club rebuilding. So Joey Grego, who's their sponsor, knows as other sponsors here at LCCC do that with a two-year program, you're always building, but building in a very positive way for the Rotar Club here. So it's really a nice article. If you get a chance to read it, I'll leave it with Vicki, and I think it's excellent information about what our students are doing and the success we talked about.
Thank you, Ed. Any other new business? Yes, Butch.
I don't know if this is new business, but from the Albany County Campus.
Yes, oh, yeah.
Hopefully, we're getting close to selecting a new vice president for the campus. And so we're in the final selection process, so we're anxious to hopefully put that to bed.
Could you tell us how that went? Like, how many people that you had and what your final selection field is?
I think we started with close to 90 applicants for the position. And there was probably about 12 on the review committee. And we've, we're down to two, hopefully, strong candidates. One that we feel is, is pretty strong. So the next stage is the due diligence.
Mm-hmm.
And doing some reference checks, I guess, and process. But this was my first, first time on an academic search, and it was, it's a grueling process. It's just time-consuming and I had no idea. I just, I think we started in January. So it's, it's an eye-opener, to say the least.
It is. Well, thank you for that report. And we need to get you on the agenda somewhere other than last. So Vicki, could we do that? Have a heading there somewhere where we have a report from the Albany County Campus? I thought we used to. Did I miss it?
No, well, we're official now, right?
Yeah, you're official.
Before that.
Yeah.
Thank you, I don't want Butch stepped away to the very end.
Well, madam chair, it would be appropriate to leave just the reports to the board.
Yes, absolutely, that's what I was thinking. All right. Thank you so much.
And madam chair, to his credit, as a community member, as a member of our advisory board, ex officio to your board, Butch took a significant amount of his time to serve as the co-chair of that search committee, and that's deeply appreciated.
Yes.
Who's Kathleen? She's the one that put in lots and lots of work on it.
Hi, Aaron. Very good, thank you. Is there any other new business? Oh, Bill.
I just want to say I agree with Don about this. I hope we aren't squashed again because it was horrible. I don't want to do it.
I know, it's tough for you to do it.
No, I'm just kidding. No, we wasn't, I want to tell, the other day, retired educators, the two girls that were selected from LCCC that Ann and Jolvy brought with her to the luncheon came dressed very, very nicely. They spoke very well, and they are both going on from LCCC to become elementary educators. And I was very proud that they were part of LCCC. I just want y'all to know that.
Thank you for that. That is exciting. Thank you. Any public comment? Anyone else like to speak? If not, may I have a motion for adjournment, please?
So move.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. We are adjourned. I'm sorry it's so late. Brooke, I'm sorry.